Can I say that?
Court meeting in order. Do you all please rise? I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on a business that's before us this evening. And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest court, liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Bassow.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
All right, great. Some special presentations tonight. We've got some new police officers to be sworn in and clerk. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a few court comments here.
Sure.
I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing us to host this recognition ceremony and for the unwavering support of the police department. One of our early goals of this police administration was to modernize our recruitment process with an objective to hire an exceedingly qualified and diverse workforce, the best that could serve the citizens of Palos Heights, which tonight I believe we've accomplished with hiring these new officers and the officers that have preceded them. With the addition of Cynthia and Jordan tonight, we will now bring our department to full staffing, a level which we haven't experienced in several years. This evening, we distinguish these talented police officers for their service to our community and for their actions within our community. Thank you.
I, Jordan Kuglazarn.
I, Jordan Kuglazarn.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer in the city of Palos Heights.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer in the city of Palos Heights.
In the county of Coca Forset.
In the county of Coca Forset.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer for the city of Palos Heights.
Of the office of police officers for the city of Palos Heights.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I think it's our picture. Is she going on?
No, there's one more. Oh, there's two. Yeah.
I, Cynthia. Oh, my goodness. I am sorry. I apologize. I, Cynthia.
I, Cynthia.
Sol Bolvada. Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Having been appointed to office of police officer.
In the city of Palos Heights.
In the city of Palos Heights.
In the county of Cook, Aforset.
In the county of Cook, Aforset.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of police officer for the city of Palos Heights.
Of the office of the city of Palos Heights.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
I have one more presentation.
Sure. So yours.
Ashley. This is Officer Ashley Vincent. She's relatively new to us within the last two years. Tonight, I'm presenting her with a life-saving award. Earlier this year, Officer Vincent was dispatched to a household, referenced a person in cardiac arrest. Officer Vincent located the unresponsive person and immediately took over CPR and rescue breathing efforts until paramedics arrived. Officer Vincent's quick response and immediate and accurate assessment of the situation and her calm professional conduct were crucial in bridging the time before this person could be treated by medical professionals. Officer Vincent also helped the concerns of family members present during his chaotic time. Thanks to Officer Vincent's quick efforts, this person was transported to Northwestern Palos Hospital with a pulse, breathing on their own. Congratulations on your oath.
Chief? Chief, do you have one more?
Yeah, no, I just want to get photos with the four new officers, relatively new officers.
Since everybody's dressed up. You have something for Lindsey?
No.
Oh, okay. Congratulations to all of the new officers and thank you and congratulations to Ashley for bravery and helping us out in this situation and we're getting younger and younger every year, it seems like.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving right along, under the consent calendar, I've got two items. The approval of the minutes for the city council meeting from February 6, 2024, and the approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending February 16, 2024. Motion to approve that? Moved by Alderman Violet. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? Rule call.
Officer Alderman Begley.
Here.
It's because I counted.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
All right, no sealed bids tonight under officials. My couple remarks I have. We've had a longstanding relationship, the police department has, with the Special Olympics and this year is no different. They're going to do the annual polar plunge. And the polar plunge will be, they raise money, obviously, and the money goes to the Special Olympics, you know, throughout the state of Illinois. The event will be on March 2nd at noon over to the west side of City Hall, actually, to the west side of the police station, where they have a pool set up and they all jump in the pool and plunge and raise money accordingly. If you can't make that and you would like to donate money to the polar plunge in the name of the Palos Heights Police Department, if you just go to the website for Palos Heights Police and they'll lead you to the website for the polar plunge. And then also tonight, I just, I came in tonight, there's a Stag High School. The Music Boosters is having their Art for the Season Arts and Crafts Festival on March 16th from 9:00 to 4:00 and March 17th from 10:00 till 3:00. So if you're in the area, please support our local high school. That's all I have. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No reports today.
City treasurer?
Thank you. No reports tonight.
City attorney?
I have very, no report.
Okay. Communications, anyone have?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, I would like to clarify a couple of things from our last council meeting. When we were discussing Phase 1 of the proposed City Hall remodel, it was stated that the building department was once located in the front of the building, as if to say that moving it now was kind of a frivolous plan since we moved it to the back in the building in 2000. What was left out of that statement is the fact that there was a reason for the building department being located in the front and that's because the Palos Heights Police Department was located in half of this building. So from here on back was the police department. And so the rest of, what encompasses City Hall today was all in the front, including, I suspect, the rec department and everything else was up here. And then while making comments, several residents mentioned the new 1% tax associated with the unanimously voted on Business District along Harlem and corridor. It was stated that when defending the Business District, me, I stated that it wasn't a tax. That is not true. What I, I watched the city council meeting twice again. What I said was that it wasn't a tax being collected like real estate tax. It's a, this is a consumer tax. So when money is spent within the Business District, a 1% tax is collected and that does not come into the coffers of the city. It's being reinvested into the Business District. And so I just wanted to make that clear. And then thirdly, a resident also stated that the Parks and Rec Department lost or moved an OSLAT grant for Orchard Park to the pool remodel and that just didn't occur. It cannot occur. You can't do that. We would never even consider doing something like that. It's not allowed and we would lose all funding if we ever did something like that. And so I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other communications? Anyone have? Citizens wish to address the council?
I have a couple of things that I would like to discuss today. My name is Harlanoy Boda, 7640 West 135th Street, Orland Park, Illinois.
Orland Park? Then you should go over to Orland Park City Council, sir.
Yeah, you got that right. It probably should.
It probably should.
We should probably deannex. That's probably not a bad good idea. Do you recommend that? Would you like to make that motion?
No, actually, what I recommend is you getting your postal report back into.
Would you like to make a motion? Maybe somebody will second it for deannex.
Let's continue with your.
Go ahead.
Continue, please.
Well, as the city is fully aware, I am out over several thousands of dollars. I've had at least four trees that have died. I have numerous bushes that have died. I've had landscaping that had to be replaced and had drain tile that had to be put in. I have asked the city, since all of this, my issues are because of something that the city has done, to try to make me whole. I haven't had the city even contact me, come over to my house to talk to me or say anything to me, which is kind of a sore subject. I filed a complaint with the Illinois Attorney General's Office. The Illinois Attorney General's Office says, well, Palos Heights has a compliance officer. This compliance officer's name is Frank Giordano. Well, Frank Giordano is the same man who went against me and basically charged me with doing something illegal when I was trying to protect my home and my property. And it wasn't me who was doing something illegal. It was something that was done illegally to me. So through the, so so far, as you can see from this office of attorney general, this request for him to try to meet with me was dated November 13, 2023. Well, today is February 20, 2024. I think I've given plenty of time for him to try to call me, to contact me, to see if we could possibly have something out to try to make me whole. Now, I think it's a shame. Now, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe you really know to the extent of what the city did. I don't think that they're keeping you abreast of what's going on. The city of Palos Heights took advantage of a dead person. They dug up his front yard without his permission, put sewer and water in his yard and just went home. And they're saying, oh, well, you caught me, but we're not going to do anything about it. And that's the shameful part about it. Now, if you read in there, if you look at the last page there, you're going to look at an easement agreement. The easement agreement was between me and the city of Palos Heights and it's clearly, clearly shown in an easement agreement that there's another piece of property in between my property and where the sewer wanted to go through. So the city of Palos Heights knowingly and willingly violated the law. So now that I own that property and since the city doesn't want to make me whole, I'm saying, okay, give me some compensation for my easement agreement. Because now that I own that property, you don't have the right to be on it because you never, ever asked for the right to do it. It's illegal what they did and everybody just keeps blowing me off and everybody says smart-ass remarks like my own alderman, who's never come to my house to talk to me, never came over to look at it, but he's going to say smart-ass shit like that.
Every time you turn around, say Orland Park. Yeah?
It's because that's my mailing address, sir, so I'm saying what it says.
Stay on point, please.
But I live in Orland Park according to my mailing address.
Look at the sign in front of your house.
Stay in park. Point, please. Okay. My second item was I know a few people are here for the city remodel. And we used to be a pretty frugal town. I've been here for 34 years. I was very disheartened, Mr. Mayor, when you thought nothing of spending $440,000 to remodel four bathrooms, four very tiny bathrooms, which amounts to $110,000 apiece. If you cannot protect us citizens to get a lower price than $440,000 for four small little bathrooms to be remodeled, maybe it is time to retire. You too.
Any other citizens wish to address? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Linda Miller. Excuse me.
Sure, take your time.
Linda Miller. I live at 7228 West 125th Street and good evening. I'm here to voice my support for appropriate parking restriction on 125th Street between Harlem Avenue and 72nd Court. This is where I live. And recent problems created by excessive off-street parking at said location have come to the city's attention and, as I understand it, are being addressed. But for years, off-street parking has been an ongoing problem for me. I can only suspect that due to the close proximity of my shaded residential street to Harlem Avenue, customers or their drivers of neighboring businesses often park in front of my house despite ample parking in the business lots. Random drivers of passenger cars, work vans, trucks regularly park in front of my house to take a lunch break or some such break. I could continue, but I'd rather be brief. But what I will say is that with the expected reopening of the OSF branch, which is adjacent to my property, as well as the expanded, some would say thriving, business at Ridgeland Dental, which is diagonally across from me, my problem will continue and worsen. To be clear, I have no objection to the glut of off-street parking for events like the Classic Car Show, our parades, a neighbor hosting a large party. These are temporary and controlled situations that are part of the fabric of life in Palos Heights. So in closing, as I understand, the city is addressing the issues of public property damage and traffic obstruction on 125th Street. Toward that effort and in view of my particular place there, I ask the city to establish and enforce appropriate parking restriction at the residential portion of 125th Street, north and south sides, between Harlem Avenue and 72nd Court. So with that, I thank you for your attention and your consideration.
Thanks, Ms. Miller. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any? Citizens?
Hello. Lindeskiappa 13442, Edinburgh Drive, Palos Heights. I know that we're going to be voting on the improvements here at City Hall and I would just like to point out a couple of things. There was a poll on the front page of the regional news and perhaps we could delay the vote until that poll comes out to see if we get any residential feedback on that. Might be a good idea because I don't think the residents have really had much time to be involved or informed of said renovations. I know it's been talked about for a long time, so I've been told, but I was only first made aware of it personally and I'm a pretty involved person in the city. I like to believe I am. And I didn't find out about it until I think it was at the December meeting or maybe even the January meeting when I actually saw a plan when I was at a Buildings and Grounds meeting. So there wasn't really ample time for any residential or residence input and it is a public building and, as I stated before, when we do anything in parks and recreation, we have always allowed public comment on that and I would hope that you could take that into consideration. Perhaps consider scaling back some areas in the project and making other areas more important, i.e. the electrical, since that was brought up a couple of times as being high risk. I think it probably should be addressed in Phase 1 as well as, I think that we just really, we talk about, what's the difference between 500, 250, $100, whatever, $100,000 or a million? It's called being good stewards of taxpayer dollars and I would like you all to keep that in mind when you make your vote tonight. Thank you very much.
Any other citizens? If not, the Finance Committee, Alderman McGrogan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Number 7 on the agenda, we have a motion to entertain, enter into a 36-month contract with Comcast, which will upgrade the city's phone system at all the locations within the city.
Moved by Alderman McGrogan, seconded by Alderman McGovern. Discussion?
Yeah. Did Comcast have an exclusive in town or do you only want it can provide cable services? Is there anything that they ask me in the future would go out of bid to make it a little more fair?
Well, I mean, you've got Dish and, you know, other things like that. And again, that whole industry may be changing too, like streaming and the like.
The reason is they had a couple of calls. I would certainly have a couple more completed because Comcast has raised substantially their bills and everything. And I just presumed that they could go on contract to whoever they want then, right? It's just Comcast providing their services to the city.
They go to AT&T or.
That's what I mean. That's my point. So I was correct.
Yeah, and, Mr. Mayor, just on that point, the amount that we're spending on a monthly basis is just under $2,200. It's quite a bit less than the other bids and, you know, some of the bids where they had a, one company had a one-time fee of almost $50,000 and Comcast was under $2,000. So this, you know, as much as some people are upset with Comcast, the city of Palos Heights, we're getting a pretty good and a fair deal.
And my understanding too is the phone system we have now, we can't even get phones for them. You know, we've got to get them from eBay and the like, so.
And this covers all the buildings, the rec center, the police department.
Any other questions? Rule call.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question and maybe you could comment on this. I was, we had a meeting before tonight's meeting on the finance and we talked about the different grants the city has and we just, it was brought up, you know, just to bring us up to speed. Do you think that with all the money that, because I was watching some newscast and maybe your conference of mayors covers some of this, do we have any jeopardy of, like, where the city or the state, basically, or MWRD or whoever's making these donations, they're reallocating a lot of money to different causes to cover some of the migrant expenses? I mean, it's a half a million dollars a day for meals. And do we run the risk of any of these programs that we normally get grants from getting cut back?
No, not from, one of the major things we get is the STP money, which is the surface transportation money for the roads and that comes from the tax dollars and that's a federal grant. That wouldn't change at all. But they're not, the money we talked about for OSLAT and things like for the rec department, you may find out some of that tomorrow. I know the governor's giving his state of the, state address tomorrow, so that.
Yeah, that's, it was one of the things they, on one of the news channels, they said that, you know, they've just relocated over half a billion dollars, you know, in the last several months out of this year's budget and they asked to, Governor Pritzker wants to, you know, get another 250 million and then have Cook County, Mrs. Perwinkle to come up with another 70. And I was just thinking that the money's coming from, I mean, it's, when they talk about the entities, it's taxpayers. We're the, we're the funding source. So I just was wondering if they're getting that, usually those funds would go to some other worthy cause and if they're reallocating it, do we have to worry about, like, this grant's not getting funded?
I don't see, anything that we get should be a stable source of income for us. I mean, other than OSLAT maybe, just because, you know, that's allocated every year, but, you know, that still should stay in place.
So if they say yes on a grant, they can't like, they can't like recapture?
Once it's been awarded, you know, yeah, yeah.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay. All right, Public Safety, Alderman Bassow?
Yes, Mayor. I have no report this evening, but I'd like to congratulate all our new officers and once again, remind everyone to be alert because now there's income time tax. Please at least be reminded that you don't pay your income tax with gift cards. You're sure to get some calls to do so. So again, from now until your taxes are due, just beware. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
All right, Municipal Grounds and Property, Alderman Begley?
Thank you, Mayor. On the agenda, there's a number 8, which I think we actually handled at the last city council meeting. I think that might be a duplicate. No, that's, that's new. Okay. I'm told that that is actually correctly added. That's a motion to adopt an ordinance declaring the following three vehicles as surplus and to sell three on IBID. 2007 Chevy Impala, VIN number 2G1WT58K17932302717. A 2007 Chevy 3500 Silverado, VIN number 1GCHK34K37E574129. And a 2011 Chevy Tahoe, VIN number 1GNLC2E04BR23456. Do I have a second?
Moved by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Yeah, I won't ask you to repeat all those numbers.
That's two council meetings in a row that I had the privilege of.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Rule call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassow.
Aye.
A motion carries. Next up we have on the agenda is, we brought up the motion toward the City Hall remodel improvements that was deferred to this week. I just want to make a few general comments on this. By all means, the aldermen, you know, have been engaged in this for a long time. Everyone can vote yea or nay tonight. Whatever it is, we'll, we'll deal with that. I just want to make it clear that a no vote tonight means that the bathroom situation doesn't go away, which is, I think, important to everyone to point out. But also, we're incurring additional expenses on creating new architectural plans and I think that's something that I wanted to draw attention to because we've spent close to $67,000 in the 18 months that we've worked on this already. And to go back to the drawing board, which by all means, we're happy to do in our committee, happy to bring that back. But it's going to be another $30,000 plus, based on the information I've received, to, you know, to redo that. If we do what Alderman McGrogan has proposed in correspondence to other individuals and kind of like an ad hoc committee he created in the past two weeks, he's suggesting merging together portions Phase 1 and 2, which would be great. he's suggesting merging together portions Phase One and Two, which would be great, actually, because it would actually be more work accomplished in, you know, which I think is actually a nice idea. But it does impact the workflow that we would have. So we'd have to displace some of the employees here, which would create the work environment here a little bit. We'd have to somehow cover the, you know, wherever we'd put those folks. So there's things that we'd have to take into consideration with that as well. I just want to make it very clear, because there's been a lot of discussion about the number of bathrooms. Right now, we actually have eight bathrooms in this building. And the new project would have eight bathrooms as well, and we would lose one urinal. That's the information I've received from our Public Works Director. So we're not actually adding any new bathrooms. We're... They're getting consolidated, but we're... It'd be the same number of bathrooms minus a urinal. The number of bathrooms is set by the occupancy. It's not something that, to meet the code, we can just play around with that. So I just want to make sure that those types of things are answered because I appreciate that that's been brought up a few different times. So the other part of this is, is that, you know, with the $913,000 bid to get this worked on, that price is not going to go away. So if we, you know, the... Combining the two, we're not really budgeted for that for this year. We could push this off to the future years, but the work that has to be done isn't going to cost any less. So when we're talking to our constituents, I think it's very important that we are honest and upfront with them about the work that is getting done, and not just saying that's just some kind of fancy schmancy. We're putting in plush furniture here. These are handicap bathrooms, HVAC, and electric. So the final number, ultimately, if we do go ahead and try to renege this, will be a higher number. It is my understanding that some of the council individual... Council members here have identified that they will essentially be obstructionist if we go ahead with the $913,000 plan. And if there's change orders moving forward in the future, they won't approve those. So I want to make all the other council members aware that if we do go ahead with this plan tonight without kind of cooperating, so to speak, on, you know, combining Phase One and Two, making it a bigger project and affecting this workflow aspect of it, if we, you know, we're kind of facing, maybe this... Maybe we do go ahead and go back to the drawing board. If every change order's going to be a problem. I want everyone to get along and work on this nicely. Unfortunately, this was not the smoothest bathroom remodel project. But I think that I want everyone just to kind of give that some thought with what we're... Where we're at tonight. The vote has to get called tonight, and so I want, you know, I want what's best for the city. I want what's best for the residents, and I want what's best for our employees here. And so I'm very comfortable bringing this back to my committee if that's what everyone wants to do. And I think our Public Works Director would be fine with that too, but I just want to be very upfront about, you know, we do have that option. And so, that being said, if we can call the vote.
Any other comments?
Just one. You know, there's been so much information back and forth. I suggested probably years ago, and along with Alderman Basso, that a long time ago, that maybe this is an old expression, that a suit on a pig is still a pig. And the thing is, is that keep throwing money into an old building would have been a wise thing to do at the time, not now. It's just rip this old building down at the time and put a state-of-the-art win up then, when it was more cost-effective. More or less, we're doing now is this ongoing sort of damage control in a way, but improvements on another side. Some of it's for safety, I understand that. Some of it isn't. Some is guideline by codes, some of it isn't. There's a thing about the four bathrooms here, and there's two over here. I was just wondering why the two behind the non-public sector have to be redone when one was done already. And these would be the public bathrooms, which would be the ADA and that, and that would be set forward. Moving the officers and there to the front is one thing. Put Phase Two or Three or whatever in the back. That could be done at a later date or is ongoing by Public Works saving a considerable amount of money, which is ongoing right now. The one room next to the Alderman, I understand is going to be a new conference room, which is already in the process of sort of being done, if I'm correct, right? It's not. What's that room going to be then?
No, I mean, it's not being done now.
No, I say it's got to be.
Oh, yeah, yes.
It's ongoing.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. And then the Alderman's room consisting now would be the break room for staff with the new kitchen, which is ongoing right now. So those costs are going to be saved through Phases Two and Three. Then it just comes to the back room and how much electrical and how outdated and the HVAC systems have to go through the ceilings over to the back to bring everything in sync. Because I know with the governors and the software and all this other stuff, it costs a lot of money, $30,000, $40,000, $50,000, $60,000 to make that HVAC system work in this old building. So the other thing that sort of looked at is why it wasn't considered a maybe. And I know it costs a lot because commercial or municipal building construction roughly costs $432 a square foot in a building this size, which is $11,200 to $300 down here, and another $4,200 in the annex upstairs, roughly $15,000 to $16,000 square feet. To put an addition on, say, the length of the building out towards that way with the new portico sidewalk and what have you, would cost, at that price, would cost you about $6.1 million. So that became, I guess, not feasible.
Right, I agree.
It's just that I have a few apparitions about apprehensions about some of the bathroom things. The front part and the public's one thing, the other two is another thing. Because the one has been done. I thought it was gorgeous back there, but the ADA, I was just wondering, being ADAs up here, would that serve the purposes for everybody else in the staff, not just the public? Being these are two ADA, and the other two just remain regular bathrooms back there.
According to the plans, the ones in the back are minimal amount of being done. I mean...
The one across the mirror office, and then the ladies' room down the hall.
Those are just minimal, you know, being done. There's not much being done to those at all. There's no new bathrooms. They're staying as they are.
Those bathrooms are staying as they are.
Yeah, I mean, there's a little bit cosmetic, but that spot, there's not a lot of...
They're not being ripped out and made ADA?
Well, yeah. Adam, you want to... What's going back there?
Yes.
If you don't mind, I'll get to...
The two bathrooms in the back, they are going to be modified to a point that it's going to be a single stall bathroom. It's a single-use bathroom. So there's going to be... The wall between the two bathrooms is going to be knocked down. Some plumbing will be reworked in order to make sure that it's wheelchair-accessible and you're able to make a 360-degree turn in that room.
The two in the back.
The two in the back, yes.
And the one in the back's being eliminated completely.
And the one that cannot be modified at all. It's just the space is constricted.
Are they back-to-back plumbing walls here in this center front, these two right here, by any chance? Is it a common plumbing wall?
There is a common plumbing wall, and the bathrooms share the same plumbing wall. However, we will put the new women's bathroom on the opposite side, which involves ripping out the floor and adding new plumbing from that side all the way to the main sewer.
So that's a new matter of redirection and hook.
Correct. So it involves taking down walls, cutting open a concrete floor, rerouting all the sewers, rerouting the plumbing and so on.
Adam, while you're there, Adam, can I just ask you to explain one thing? Just because if we're going to talk about this now, or we're going to talk about this in the future, why is it, Adam, that if we have gender-neutral bathrooms, we can't reduce the number of bathrooms that are being called for in the plan?
Okay, so in... The way the plumbing code works, if you have a total... The occupancy of this building, let's say the occupancy of this building is 60 people. You divide that 60 people by 30, by half, so you have half is female and half is male. And then you look at the plumbing code, and you look at how many water clauses, which are fixtures. The toilets are needed, and urinal can be classified as a fixture. And you look at how many sinks are needed as well to wash your hands. And you divide the total number of occupancy of 60 divided by two, and then you figure out how... What's needed. If you make one general neutral bathroom, which you could be, it doesn't take away how many occupants are at City Hall, and what's the maximum occupancy of this facility. So therefore, you still have to make the bathrooms and the fixtures... You have to make enough of them in order to satisfy...
You have to have the same quantity of bathrooms based on occupancy, not on whether or not it's based on gender-neutral versus female or male bathrooms.
So a gender-neutral does not cut in half the number of bathrooms you need?
It does not. Right now, if you have a single-use bathroom, that means that there's only one stall in it. It can be either a male or a female by code. You can't... You cannot make it a male or a female. It has to be both. However, if you have multiple toilets in a bathroom, then you can designate between a male and a female. So that designation would be up here, and the two bathrooms in the back would be all gender bathrooms, classified as all gender bathrooms. If that makes sense.
To answer your question, Jack?
Yeah, I got it here. I was just reading this here. Adam Paviantis is under Regulation 20, the Work Space Occupational Health, Safety, and Welfare Regulations of 1992. Is that what they're following under her for bathrooms, number of people and stuff like that?
Oh, so the number of people is ba... Or the amount of toilets and fixtures are based on the Illinois Plumbing Code. It's on the public sp...
I want to read this. Could you correct me when I... If this is right or wrong?
Okay.
Just so I know. It says, "If your work space is entirely female or a mixed group, there must be one toilet and one wash basin for one to five people. Two toilets or two wash basins between 6 and 25 people. Three toilets, three wash basins between 26 and 50 people. Four toilets and four wash basins between 51 and 75 people. Five toilets, five wash basins, 76 to 100." So would that pertain to... Is that what we're saying?
It's very similar to what the Plumbing Code says. So if you have a total of 15 male and 15 female employees or occupants, then that class... You need one toilet for men and one toilet for men. And anywhere between 16 and 30, then you need two toilets for men and women. Anything over 35 plus, then you need three. And as far as the public, without any employees being here, just the general public being here, I believe the maximum occupancy that's right now set is above 80, which requires three female fixtures and three male fixtures. And even today, I think we counted 66 people that were here, not including the five employees that are right now working Channel Four, so that's above 70, which pretty much dictates that we need three male and three females.
Right up here, the public sector.
Correct.
All right.
Adam, before you step down, I just want to thank you because I know that our committee and the ad hoc committee had you doing a lot of work the past month and in past months, and we always appreciate your work. So thank you so much, Adam.
No problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the plan that Mike came up with, based on your trip to California, we had your architect checking out.
I just came back from a conference, and maybe Calif... Of course, California's out west. A lot of things start in California and head this way. But absolutely every single bathroom I went to over three or four days or five days, whatever I was there, were unisex bathrooms, and it's... And not only that, I know some people that are in the construction business here doing things like the airport and major jobs. And it's heading in our direction where they're consolidating the bathrooms and just putting, like, unisex. And so instead of having, like, a bathroom that says men and then another one, women, it just says unisex, and then it usually has the handicap sticker down below. And so, you know, if this isn't voted on, I think, given the amount of time, I got a feeling that some of these codes are going to be changing because we're not... I mean, they're going away from the old traditional way of, you know, men's and women's bathrooms.
But I think even with the architects, even if you designate them unisex, it still doesn't change the amount of toilets you need, or, you know, within the whole building.
You know, one of the other things we talked about is that we could lower the capacity of this because we do have, like, a really nice rec center that the city is, you know... We talked about this, I think, at one of the other meetings. And so even a night like tonight, which is our biggest meeting, when you have the police in their recognition nights, which are well-deserved, that, you know, we could actually, when we know that there's going to be attendance, we could actually have those, like, over in the rec center, which we've done previously on big nights, when we have, like, when we were looking at, like, the RZA piece over there and stuff. We had a number of meetings, and we just would go over there. And there's nothing that says, to my knowledge, that, you know, our city council meetings have to be in this room. If we think we are going to have a crowd, why not just, like, lower the attendance level here from, like, as Adam said, maybe 60 people, down to 40? And then we could cut back and be within the regulations of the thing. I don't want to get... I mean, you know, this is... I'm just... The only thing that I want to say is I'm not against, like, making sure things are safe and everything, but I think is we have fiduciary responsibilities to our residents. And if we think we can do things more effectively, where we can save the taxpayers some money, because God knows taxes aren't going down. We all have to pay our tax bills. And so that's the only reason that some of the discussion that we have, you know, I feel like I'm the bad guy, but I really am just looking out. I mean, I ended up getting this Finance Committee, which is really, as I said to the mayor and others, it's like being an auditor. And, you know, one thing I learned in the bank 50 years ago was the definition of an auditor is the guy that goes in and kills the wounded. And, you know, I mean, it's... Sometimes I feel like, you know, people are thinking, I'm doing this on purpose. I think I have the... If, you know, if I'd be looking the other way if I wasn't bringing up these points. And that's all I want to say about it.
And just last thing, your point is well-taken. If we had a bigger crowd, we would move over there. But what dictates the amount of bathrooms we need is the square footage of the building, not how many people are in it. So that means it's... You can say we have...
So it's not a people-driven?
It's not people-driven.
Right.
So...
Because that's what I thought Adam said, it was by...
The amount of square footage dictates how many people the building can hold.
Right.
That's right? Is that right? Okay.
And I just want to say, Mike, we appreciate you, you know, you're looking into this, by all means. I mean, I think we all want to work together on that, and I think that's important. I just think that, you know, I want to say as a whole, I think, let's work together, though. Let's have these communications moving forward.
We've tried in the last... I mean, since it came up in the last couple of months. It's the first time myself and some of the other Alderman really focused, because we're not on your committee. That's when we really got involved.
And when we have the meetings, they'll come. You know what I mean? Like, if, you know, we invited you to the one, and so I think that would have saved a lot of the harassment with the environment, with the residents.
You and others... I don't want to go there. You want me to go there? I asked before I left the city that night. You were sitting right there. I said, "I guess I can go. There's nothing else going on tonight." And a half an hour later, there was a meeting. Alderman Clifford didn't go either. He was here, and he left. So the two of us...
He was there. Alderman Clifford was at the meeting.
I don't think he was.
Yeah, he was. He was at the meeting. And we actually were like, we kept saying, like, where's Mike?
On the public... No, I left that time. It was right after rec. I left right after rec.
Yeah, we both did.
No, you were there. You spun around in your chair. You were there. I remember seeing you there.
At that Public Works meeting or this meeting here.
I mean, it's... But Jack called me the next day and said, "Did you stay for the meeting?" And I didn't. I would have, for sure. Although, in hindsight, nothing would have been accomplished based on the discussions that came up after that. So I'm kind of glad I didn't go because it just saved me some aggravation.
Excellent.
But again, Mike, your point is well...
Fascinating.
Your points will take another bathroom. We try to adjust it.
Yeah, right. I mean, it gets to the point where maybe there's...
Do it.
Okay. Any other discussion coming in?
No, I would call this to have a vote then, make a motion to award the City Hall remodel improvements to Construction Solutions of Illinois for their low bid of $913,723 for Phase One of the project.
Second.
Moved by Alderman, let's see.
I had a couple of comments on that.
Pardon?
Again, I... Yeah, I thought your recommendation was to ease back a little bit and go back to committee. But occasionally, we have these situations that seem pretty drastic, pretty dramatic, and unfortunately, sometimes pretty hostile. But because I read in the Regional that they've... Somebody's already predicted how this vote would go if it happens tonight, is that it'll be a tie. And so nothing will change. And I've heard other comments such as, "Well, we spent a year working on the plans. We have..." You know, in essence, we have to pass it. We spent the whole year working on it. Could be a bad idea. We spent some year on it, and maybe we've discovered that it's not such a hot idea. Someone else said, "Well, no one's going to change their mind, so why should we bother talking about it anymore?" It's going to... Whatever it is, it is. And still, others of us have to realize that we're all part of the dynamics of a group. And whether we realize it or not, we each play a special role. So obviously, some of us Aldermen are going to find any way possible to say yes to this plan. And some of us other Aldermen are going to hold the ground and whatever we hear, we're probably going to say... And some of us, other aldermen, are going to hold the ground and uh whatever we hear, we're probably going to say no. And some people can be swayed more easily than others, and some people can't be swayed at all. But when I look at the city and I and I look at the city hall, and you reminded me last meeting that I wanted, I was investigating a whole new facility. Okay, and I think you said, um, but that's not going to happen. Well, maybe it will happen. Maybe we won't be sitting here, but maybe it will happen. Maybe it'll be a different administration. Maybe it'll be a different council. Maybe it'll be somebody with uh a a great vision, but we'll have a new building here. Because this is just not a place for a couple aldermen to meet uh and rub shoulders a couple hours a month. I I personally think, and I have since I investigated a whole new facility between five and fifteen million dollars back a few years, that this is the heart of the city. This is the heart and the soul and the mechanism of the city. It's not abandoning ship and running to the rec department for a meeting. Uh, it it's not having uh the police department share this building and leave and 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 build a a great uh twenty-first century, twenty-second century, twenty-third century facility that they will never grow out of. Uh, it's it's not a place to ask if the library's calendar is filled because we might have a crowd next week. Who can predict when we're going to have a crowd or where we're going to go? Um, I remember um standing outside. The first public meeting I ever went to at the City of Payless Heights. Standing outside of what I would assume was a rented storefront on Harlem Avenue. The big issue was public water for old payless. I couldn't even get a seat. I couldn't go in the building. I was standing outside with other people. Um, when we start talking about millions of dollars for this building, we have to realize that it's functionally obsolete and has been for years. The money that we're pouring in is going to be money that's bulldozed, whether it's in the near future or in the relative distant future. But we start talking about millions of dollars to do these things. We still have the same building that we had um when Alderman Simpson uh negotiated some kind of a a situation to purchase this. It was it was uh functionally obsolescent when the utility company abandoned it. It's basically, as we are listening to hundreds of thousands of dollars and millions of dollars, it's fu- it's functionally obsolete today. And if we figured out a way, and I know it's different financing situations, different money situations, different taxing situations. We found a way to make a wonderful library. We found a way to make a wonderful police department. We found a way to make a wonderful rec department. We can find a way to do that to this facility. It's awful hard to uh just sit back and say, well, I'll go with the flow. It's only two million dollars. But if we got two million dollars in the budget to do that today, perhaps we could have two million dollars next year and the year after that and the year after that, eventually to make a plan for the future, rather than sit back and make uh make a correction for uh an error or for a law change or for another furnace that's going to go bad or another air conditioning system that's going to go out or whatever. I think it it wouldn't hurt to um set the wheels in motion for a plan that will happen, no doubt, someday in the future. Um, I can't see, this is a place where people come to invest in the city. This is a place where Jewel King and and sat in that room with their blueprints and had no place to put their coat. Not a hanger in, not a hanger in the room. This is a building that's got a whole wall of offices or spaces or uh conference rooms or committee rooms or alderman rooms with no windows. It's obsolete. It's just throwing tremendously wonderful money into horribly bad money and expecting it to get better. And I I hate to, I hate to be part of the, you know, I'm never going to change my attitude or I'm going to change my attitude just because I get out of this room and go home and and maybe sleep without drugs, you know? Um, but it's going to happen and we just seem to be ignoring it. Nobody, uh, I I mean, I heard the strangest things at the last meeting where there were several residents and um, you know, that just go someplace else. We, so in essence, there's no reason to have this building. You know, that, could you imagine people sitting around and telling and telling the mayor suggesting that we go to Harold Washington Wa- uh Library instead of having a meeting at City Hall or any town? So I look at those things as places where the future can go. And then I, and I noticed uh some some years back, I said, hey, how the heck did all these towns get these new beautiful uh city halls? They all have buildings like we did, a make-do makeshift, secondhand furniture, hand-me-down file cabinets, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And uh towns that are much smaller than ours and towns that are much larger than ours have these beautiful facilities for City Hall. Um, may- maybe they debated whether they should have their public meetings at the library. Uh, I don't know. But I I would just as soon see that that figure that's going to be um not phase one, phase two and phase three, but it's going to be three projects, major money projects, and it'll be much, much closer to two million dollars than it is to one million dollars. Pretty soon, you're talking a lot of money. Uh, what what will the next renovation be? What was the last one? How many situations have ended up here where it's physically obsolete, get me someplace else? The police department was here, they left. Uh, how many times has um uh Channel Four moved from spot to spot to spot? I can't even count them. Because at every place they, we redid, uh and and they lived in for a while, they discovered, that's physically obsolete. Let me, let's move another place. Let's move another place. Uh, I think we, you know, maybe if we opened our minds, every every one of us, uh, I can't see settling on uh such, you know, a couple, uh, not too many months ago, we were happy as a pig and slop to be in this beautiful place with this wonderful work center. Now suddenly, um, we seem to be in a game of, let's talk about how dangerous it is to be here. Uh, I I don't get it, and I hope before we do it, I hope you convince me otherwise. But thank you.
So if someone just explained procedurally that we have to vote tonight, that's the next step? Yeah, because it was deferred, so.
Let's vote. Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
No.
Alderman McGovern?
No.
Alderman Clifford?
No.
Alderman Violet?
No.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
I'm voting no, not because I don't want to spend that money, but I think it's much too less money to spend and at the, at the much too late time period. Should be, should be more. I vote no.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Motion fails. Okay, go back to drawing boards. Um, again, just, just so, just to make it clear too, just, you know, there's some, some comments about uh raising, if we did this, this would raise the taxes to individuals. This is actually coming from uh the capital mon- funds that have already been uh set aside for capital improvements, which at the end of this year or during this year will total close to six million dollars for capital projects. And of that, about one point nine is uh is ARPA money that we received from the federal government through the, during the pandemic. So this is not anything that would ever, and the next duration of this may, uh, would not actually increase their tax, real estate taxes at all. This is not how, this is not how it would be paid for, so.
What's, what's the time limit on, depending on the vote on a motion to reconsider? Is there a time limit to bring that back to the floor? If there was to fail and there was.
It, well, it did fail.
If there was new information about certain things or a new scale of plan, an emotion reconsider.
No, we have to, we have to go back to the bid.
You'd have to go back to the committee.
It's over.
Start all over.
One at a time.
Yeah.
There's no motion to reconsider. It fails. You got to start over.
We can start over.
Got to start over.
Yeah. Anything else?
Spend more consultant money.
Yep.
Uh, no, that's the end of my report. Thank you all.
Planning zoning, Alderman McGovern?
Go report, Mr. Mayor.
Recreation, Alderman Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment to Williams Architects in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents for schemi- schematic design and development and unit billing items for phase one of the pool project.
Move by Alderman Keith, is there a second? Second by Alderman Violet, discussion. Uh, roll call.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Keith?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve payment, application number one to Hacienda Landscaping in the amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine thirteen and seventy-eight cents for construction work completed on the Orchard Park project.
Move by Alderman Keith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Violet. Just, I, I, they go by their last couple days. It's really starting to look good. They're putting uh some of the structures in there and, yeah.
Never thought that would happen during February.
In February, yeah, right, okay.
What's the, Jeff, what's the total cost on a park where all of a sudden, um, there is a?
I get it.
It's water and other bridge.
Total cost.
I have no idea off the top of my head.
I do. Here, uh, five hundred. Six hun- six hundred and eighty-two thousand, of which uh two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars is in an ASL grant.
So I think our our total is around four hundred.
Four hundred and ten thousand dollars.
That's all I wanted to know.
I'm sorry.
Okay, say. Alderman McGovern?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve thirty-seven thousand, two thirty and fifty cents for the final installment of the twenty-three, twenty-four membership for SWISRA.
Move by Alderman Cl- uh, but, Keith, second by Alderman Violet, discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the formal bidding process to purchase slide equipment from Splash Tacular in the amount of, not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this pool project.
Move by Alderman Keith, is there a second? Second by Alderman Violet. Do you want to discuss that or just explain?
Yeah, please.
What, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Is there a reason that we're not going out to bid on some of this big of an amount?
The um, the structure of the slide at um, at the pool, this, the slide and the structure, the footings and all that stuff was done by a certain company. That company, though, no longer is part of the co-op where we buy stuff from. And so if we use a different company, we're going to have to spend more money on the slide. We're going to have to spend more money on new footings and all that stuff, and it would not match the slide that's there right now. And so that's why we're going independent to use the same vendor.
We're, I wasn't here at the last one because I was in the hospital, but we're adding a slide to the existing slide.
Correct.
And it's going on the existing structure there, right?
Correct. It's already there. I mean, the, the structures are.
No, I know what, I mean, I went through this years ago when they replaced the slide and they found it under the stage up there somewhere. The bolts were all there, but the thing is, uh, is there a real devastated need if we're doing this? Do they really need, need another slide there or is that a real draw on on the pool that had expense to add that there? Another slide under the slide, uh, could you, I mean, just asking.
Just repair it?
All the components in this project were in the application for the ASL grant.
They were.
We cannot change anything.
Okay, I'm asking, I'm only, I understand it. I need to know that. I didn't catch all those little points of the thing. The thing changed. First I thought it was just the locker room. Next thing I know, there's a slide going up under there. Then there's a grass playlot going in under there. I'm just asking. Then I heard.
It's always been that way.
All I'm saying is, is then I get information, oh, did you hear? They lost the one grant the state called and told them that.
Well, that's goofiness that someone said that.
Well, I'm only saying what I was told and that's why it's the premise of my question is to get clarity.
But you're on the committee, Jack, and it was never said in committee.
But I got it after that. Somebody said that they had lost her the grant that somebody, the way it was said was the state said you can only have one of the two grants, therefore they took it from the splash park and moved it to the pool. And we would do that now evidently, and I'm okay with it.
Who's they?
Huh?
Who's they?
There's people around who totally told me. I don't know the national, no matter sources.
Well, of course not, because it's disinformation. It's goofiness.
We got both grants. We have both grants.
There are, th- this is why it goes through committee, because in the committee.
I'm not trying to start, I'm asking a simple question to get clarity.
You're on the committee, Jack. You know the answer to all these. You've seen all the color boards.
I've been on that committee and I know.
We've had two, we've had two public engagement meetings.
I can't get a fifty thousand dollar slide over Veterans Park over there that I've been waiting two years for. Said they were going to put it in, and I've yet to see it over there. A simple little slide for a bunch of little kids that live over there.
That is not your main to what we're voting.
Good. We got a motion on the floor. Roll call.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
No.
Motion to approve, I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with School District one twenty-eight for use of rooms at Independence Middle School for the summer camp programs. There's no financial obligation attached to this agreement.
Move by Alderman Keith, second by Alderman Violet, discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Roads to construction, Alderman Clifford?
I wasn't here for a report. Alderman Bassow was kind enough to chair the, uh, the meeting for me. So if there's any questions, I'll ask Bob dinner, Ken and me, but I'll read off the agenda. Number five, the motion to approve purchase of RL- RL dash XL thirty forty, axle weight truck, truck scale from Tri-State Truck Scale Systems and cal- uh, cal- calibration services in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, who's that? Bassow? Dis- discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
And that's a motion to approve purchase of two, two twenty-five international HP five oh seven chassis without upfitting in the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars, seventy-four cents. Upfitting will be estimated and completed after the delivery of the two trucks.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
And the reason we're just doing this is buying the chassis and having them outfitted later. It's a cost-saving move. We'll save a lot of money by buying the chassis now at this price and then outfitting with the back ends and with saw holders and stuff. And we'll have the two big new trucks to keep our roads nice and safe during the winter. So that's the explanation of what, what it means, chassis versus that. Next is motion approved Morris Engineering for engineering services for various projects throughout the city in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bassow, discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Keith?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
And motion to, uh, to bid the twenty-twenty-four MFT road resur- MFT resurfacing project.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second? Alderman Bassow?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hit the post. Motion carries.
And lastly, motion to install temporary no parking signs on the north and south sides of one hundred and twenty-sixth street between Harlem and Seventy-sixth Avenue and Seventy-second Court until April first, two thousand twenty-four.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second? Second by Alderman Lewandowski, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I find no personal reason for any parking signs to be up there. Now, I'm going to show you this afternoon at twelve, about twelve-thirty. There's not a car parked in front of the house, okay? Yesterday, at about one-thirty in the afternoon, there's not a car parked out there. Now. Now, the only other obstruction out here is the width of the road. And the width of the road at that po- at the, coming off the Harlem Avenue is twenty feet. Now, I took another trip down to one hundred and twenty-third street this afternoon, and I measured the distance of that road, twenty-four feet. So, I cannot personally see it, plus Dr. Letowski, who is the new owner of the building, okay, has just leased eight additional parking spots just to the si- just to the, uh, south of Looms for her staff, which gives her nineteen parking spots between her property, that, and she is still in search for six more parking spots, which Adam gave me a suggestion on the other day. Now, I have been by this property since last Thursday four, five times. You, the best you can see is three cars parked on the south side, on the north side of one hundred and twenty-fifth street. There is no reason, no reason at all for any part of this street to have as much as a temporary no parking sign up. Three cars on a one-block area as, on a residential street coming off of a, a business street, it doesn't show it one bit. Additionally, we have this new do- n- she's a new businessman in the ta- neighborhood, okay? He had, she's gone through every service the city has offered to turn around and got, she actually had failed on the fire inspection when she turned around and tried to get to open, and she had to have a stairway built up on the second floor down on the outside of the building for the fire department to pass this inspection, okay? The woman right now, I believe she has six different loans out between the dentist office that she kept, brought in from Oak Lawn. She bought off Dr. Seiferman, bought the building that he, he had built. Actually attempted to try and find the architect that built the building so she could use him, except for one thing, he passed away about, about, well, in November. Now, she's in search for, like I said, six new parking spots, she's in search for a construction person to turn around and help her. She's probably as broke as any one of us around here for Christ's sake, and for what? For what? For an empty parking spot? Huh?
I have a question. What's, what's, what's gonna change between now and April first?
Mr. Mayor, so the, uh, the daily parking on the parkway and in the easement has created significant damage. Um, Adam went out there, and it's his recommendation that due to the saturated earth, uh, continued parking on that grass will, will contin- will not allow the, um, parkway and the easement to sufficiently heal, um, so that's why the April first, uh, date was recommended by the...
And that damage is, and that damage is caused from the city's efficiency to widen my street.
To, excuse me, if I could, if I could just finish what I was saying, you'd have it, I was respectful. That it would allow significant time for the ground to dry, and then cars would be able to go on there without creating significant damage. With that, I'd like to call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I just say one thing?
Question's been called, so...
I yielded to Jerry so he could say something.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So, my objection is not the, the ban of the, this particular parking issue, but when I was on public safety, we had this issue at several different spots in the city, and when you limit the parking in one posi- one particular part, especially when it involves dentist or medical offices, all it does is push the problem to the next street. And all, like, um, the resident that's here, I mean, yes, people are parking in front of the house, but if we ban the parking in front of the house, all they're gonna do is go and turn that to the side of her house. That's, I mean, it's, it's, it's almost like we're just doing it to say that we did something, but it's not gonna solve the problem. People are gonna park where they want, we have open streets.
All right.
Yeah, so, you know...
The question's been moved, you get, I gotta, I gotta go, the question's been moved.
Call the question.
You call the question. Okay, roll call.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
No.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. All I was trying to suggest is that, this is just how, see things around here, and always kind of small, amazing, and that, you know, we're changing things, we're looking for parking, just expanding, it's all over the city like Jeff said, you know, but this particular site, it's pretty wide, not an engineer in it, but when I seen that big mess there, it's sort of slightly becoming a city. What would be, or could it be, the possibility of taking that side of the road because you've got those businesses there, right there, that business apartment complex, whatever you wanna call it, and widening that part, and just widening that side of the road to the other, and making parallel parking just along that section? So when people come in, there would be parallel, like, you know, parallel parking there, and that would eliminate a lot of problems there, and the street would still stay the same way.
Well, they're looking at, so, they're, they're looking at different options, or...
If you follow what I mean, I mean, it just might, you know, we don't have that, and maybe they're starting to try to look for ways to...
Okay. All right, license permits, Alderman Lewandowski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one item on the agenda this evening, I'd like to make a motion to approve a proposal from Bradford System Corporation, Inc. for Phase One of digitizing building department plans and records not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Move by Alderman Lewandowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bu- uh, Begley, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is the digitiz- digitization of our required documents that are up in the, uh...
Archives.
Archives, yeah, so by law, we have to keep them, and they're starting to look like the Dead Sea Scrolls.
Yeah, they are. Okay. Roll call.
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Aye.
Alderman Violet?
Yes.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassow?
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's the end of my report.
Alderman Violet, water and sewer?
Uh, no report right now.
All right, business and economic development, Alderman Key?
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McGovern, cable, TV?
No report this evening, Mayor.
Any old business?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
It's ge- it's becoming more and more frustrating being on this council when we act to do something and then we halt actually doing it. Buying a piece of property that we're gonna turn into a parking lot, knowing it was gonna be a parking lot, and then eight residents show up and speak against it, we spend a lot of money on the parking lot, and then we don't do it. We unanimously spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then we go, oh, no, we're not gonna do it. Or, we look at a budget, we vote on a budget, and then we decide we're not gonna spend the money, because, you know, why don't we read the budget when it's, when it's up? And here we are for a third time, just in the last year and a half. The reason that there's a committee is because they're doing the work, they're doing all the running around, getting the figures, our department heads are doing it, and I think it was really irresponsible of the newspaper to put in a poll, I think it was ridiculous. They know noth- the, the regional knows nothing about this building. This is an old building, it has dangerous wiring in it, so let's just kick the can down the road. That's, that's smart of us. You know, the ci- we could've had a brand-new city hall, because when the police department was built, they offered to build a new city hall, and they would take over this building, and the city council said no. Now it sounds goofiness. Where, where the, what we call the Alderman Room, is everyone aware that that used to be a garage? That it's not even hooked up to the ATRAC system? That's why there's an air conditioner heater thing in the, in the window? I don't wanna be re- I don't wanna be responsible for, you know, which one, which bathrooms are we gonna make ADA, you know, like, cutting one out or cutting two out is gonna save a bunch of money? That's baloney. We're stewards of this building. I think it's, it's, it's almost, it's embarrassing. If we went around and said how many toilets were in our homes, I wonder how many, just the eight of us would have in our homes for our families, and we're worried about how many bathrooms are in the city hall, give me a break. This is ridiculous that we're even discussing this. We keep on kicking the can down the street on all this stuff. The reason we're spending so much money in the, in the, um, rewinding sewers and stuff is because we've been kicking the can down the road, and now we're paying the price for it. We're supposed to do our jobs in, 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 in committee. We're not suppo- our job is not to poll the residents every time we spend money. We didn't poll the residents if we're gonna spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars painting a, a water tower. We spend money all the time, and the, and the fact of the matter is, the mayor just mentioned again, almost just under two million dollars is sitting from, the money that we got from the feds. But let's not spend it on something we need to. Where were we when we spent all the money on this room? How did, how did this go to bid? Oh, that's right, we voted unanimously to go off for bid for this, and then once again, yep, let's go to bid, yep, it's gonna be two million, or a million, excuse me for saying two million. It's gonna be a million seven, and then, nope, we're not gonna do it. It's embarrassing, sitting in committee, sitting in this room, unanimously voting on stuff, and then changing our mind. Because you know what, it looks like we're not doing our work when we're supposed to be reading our minutes. Every, every agenda for every meeting that ever takes place out here are, is on the city website. Any resident can go look at what we're talking about, they can attend the meetings, but they don't come to meetings, they don't come, they don't come to the water meetings, they don't come to building and grounds, they don't come to anything, and all of a sudden now, there's a crisis. It's ridiculous. And you know why the residents were here? Because one of us stirred it up. One of us started making phone calls with misinformation. You know, what's this baloney about pulling, you know, pulling grants and stuff? It's a bunch of baloney. Or we're gonna spend two hundred thousand for this, no, the figure two thousand was never used. Oh, it's two million, no, it's not, it's one point seven. It's, it's ridiculous, the amount of, where is all this misinformation coming from? I'm sorry, I'm very frustrated, it is ridiculous, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one more comment on Alderman Key's comments, uh, do you think it's time, 'cause that, that was a repetitive theme that, um, Alderman didn't feel like they had the proper information, and that there was a number of different things going around. What would it take for us to take a look at the committee's structure and possibly consolidate committees, make more committees in the whole so that everybody would have the opportunity to attend, 'cause we have ma- I think it's a violation of the open meetings act, quite frankly.
There was like beatings going on behind our back that the Attorney General should look into.
Who did the meetings, Alderman? Then who did the meetings?
Hold on, now, excuse me, excuse me, I, hold on, uh, because we have meetings scheduled at the same time, right? And I'm, forgive me here, but if I'm at my license and permits, I can't go to rec 'cause it's at the same time, so I'm gonna be, I have to do extra work outside of it. So maybe, is this an opportunity, and what would it take to take a look at our committee's structure?
Well, as I mentioned in one of the, the, if I, if you wanna listen, if you, if everybody wants to listen to what I'm gonna say, I mentioned in one of the bi-week reports, bi-month reports, one option would be to go to a total committee of the whole, instead of having individual committees, you know, you, you shift, uh... We have to shift the, uh, book of ordinances, change that, uh...
No, you can call committee of the whole all the time.
Would not have council meeting, I mean, not have committee meetings then?
Uh, the state statutes don't, don't provide for any kind of committee setup, you guys do that, organize that on your own. So if you just wanted, in the village where I'm the mayor, we have committee of the whole, and we don't have separate committees, and we have a, we have committee of the whole all the time.
I would like that.
And maybe it's, at least to discuss it, because, you know...
Let's, 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 uh, talk about that, then, we'll, we'll set up something to talk about it.
Right, because, I mean, I'm a process guy, right? So like, even, even this project, whether we agree with it or don't agree with it, or vote for it or vote against it, it was, it was, uh, an issue brought to the committee, committee did work. Um, we hired an architect, the architect did plans, it was issued a transparent RFP, the, uh, proposals were opened in an open meeting, everything was transparent, you know, but, but the details and the, and the input in there maybe would've been better handled in a, in a committee of the whole. That way, everybody could have the same access to all the information at the same time and give their feedback, get out ahead of problems rather than, like, down the street.
In the meantime, if you individually gave me your thoughts on it, not tonight, but just in, in going forward, do we can see what we want?
Major projects, committee of the whole.
Major projects, do something like that, so, okay, thank you. Any other old business?
I have some old business.
Yes.
Actually, I have two bis- two, two items for old business, but...
Okay.
One of them has disappeared already, but I'd just like to say that, um, for months and months and months, we've been hearing from, uh, Harlan Zavoda, and I ju- I just wanna say, um, I've known Harlem for decades, probably longer than most of us have been sitting here. I worked with Harlem. I don't know Harlem to be a hostile, evil person, I don't know him to be argumentative, argumentative, I don't know him to be anything but a relatively nice human being, and I would hope that we would be able to solve his small problem if what, everything he is saying is legal, everything he's saying is right. Why we can't solve his small problem when we've solved, um, Mr. Moore's much more major situation. I'd just like to throw that out, this is, uh, sec- oh, the second item is, um, uh, I hope, I, that the meetings can be, continue to be civil, and I don't, I'm not sure that there's anything that happens here that we have control over that would make us, um, lose our temper or raise our voice over, regardless of what it is or who is speaking, or what we're speaking about. So, I'd just like to mention that, because if I can see it, you know, the city council meetings calmed way down once it hit TV. If any of you were here watching Palestite's version of Council Wars before the Council Wars, uh, before the council meetings were televised. So, if we could just, um, maybe I'll keep that in mind while we perform at these podiums.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Any citizens wishing to ask questions?
Thank you, Bob. I just wanna, I don't like everybody to go, go away mad, and I wanna apologize, I got two apologies. To you, Mr. Mayor, for spreading misinformation, correct, like Mr. Key said, I was under the impression it was four bathrooms, and I, and I misspoke, and I apologize, I didn't realize it was eight. I heard people mention four, and so I went with it, and, and to that, I apologize. And to Jerry McGovern, just so you know, I do not wanna say Orland Park, I have no interest in saying Orland Park. The mayor and I had an arrangement, he, he made a deal with the post office over twenty-some years ago to, to get ours to work, to have ours to become Palestite six oh four six three.
I've tried twice.
All I'm saying is, it, it was a done deal, but it was, it had to be a unanimous vote by the residents, and one of the residents voted no, and that's why it died. So I don't wanna say Orland Park, but it's, it, but I'm forced to because it's a very sore subject with me. But, and I wanna, I wanna thank you for your service, and I wanna apologize to you because I, I didn't mean to get mad at you, but you keep, the reason I'm saying Orland Park is because it's a sore subject with me as well. The other thing is, 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 Bob, I've been coming to city council meetings for a lot longer than most of you, you included, okay? Now, what, just so you know, hold on.
Just for your own information, okay? I spent thirty years living in Chicago. My zip code was six oh six four two, which was Evergreen Park. I never used Evergreen Park for my home address.
Okay?
That's it.
I use Palestite six oh four six two on my, on my mailing, so I do use that, but I get my mail that way, so I mean, uh, unfortunately, there's nothing I can do about it, but no, uh, we're just trying to get a second zip code, but just so you understand... uh, we're just trying to get a second zip code, but just so you understand.
That's why I tried twice.
If you talk to James here, they say they got twenty-seven million dollars in their, in their account, just so you, we all understand. Many years ago, I'm the one who came to the city council and said, you know, with this Palest Heights Orland Park thing, you guys, if you look at our utility bills, our, our electric, our taxes are going to Orland Park, our, our phone taxes were going to Orland Park, our Uti, ComEd taxes were going to Orland Park, our Ni, our Nycor gas taxes were going to Orland Park, and I said, you know, you're losing out on a lot of revenue because we're all considered Orland Park. So I was the one that helped that twenty-seven million dollars, because I was one of the ones that got all of that stuff canceled. So now, Palest Heights is now getting that revenue because of something that I told